Everyone, if I could have your attention, we'll call our meeting to order. It's good to see all of you today. It is 5:30, and I do want to remind you that we have agendas on the podium back here, if you'd like to grab one and follow along with us. Tonight, we are in our workshop, so the only thing that we'll be voting on this evening is actually the approval of the agenda. All the items that we'll be discussing will be on our agenda for voting upon at our third Monday of the month meeting. So we'll go ahead and get started. Gentlemen, you have the agenda in front of us, so I'll take a motion concerning that agenda, if you will, please.
Make a motion.
Okay, thank you, MJ. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Lester. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I'm going to turn the floor over to our city manager, Mr. Pete Presensky. We have some special guests with us this evening and some things we should be very, very proud of as a city. So Pete, I'll turn the floor over to you and let you introduce our guests.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. It certainly is a proud day for Tifton PD. Chief Hyman and I talked probably two, almost two and a half years ago about a goal that we had called state certification. He was very familiar with the program, and Tifton had some experience in it years and years ago, but when Chief took over, we talked about the importance of certification. And again, certification in this magnitude is not a plaque for the wall. This is actually work. This is actually longstanding training. This is going through everything inside and out with the police department. And he and the certification committee have done an exceptional job with this. And again, there's a lot that goes into it. I'll ask Chief to describe a little bit about that, but for policies, internal controls from officers, from the street to how we do things, everything is policy-driven. And they live and die by policies, because if we break that policy, we do something that we're not supposed to. Obviously, there is consequences. So this took a lot of work, looking at it in a lot of details, a lot of afternoons and mornings and probably weekends to get to where we are. And I'm proud to announce that Chuck Grover, with the Georgia Association of Chiefs, is here to present the City of Tifton's state certification. So I really, it's really a proud day for the police department and the men and women that serve, but more importantly, for Chief Hyman and Lieutenant Dunston, who led the charge on this. I can't say enough of positive things of what this took and where we are today. And Chief, if you'll come on forward, please, with Chuck. Chief, if you could kind of give just an overview of what certification means, what you went through in a couple of detail, so that elected officials understand that fully, as Chuck describes that.
Yes, well, we will briefly now tell you about what it means, and then Mr. Grover can help fill in some of the gaps on it. But there's several things. To us, it means that we are on track. It means that our policies and procedures that we use are, you know, the same as other agencies throughout the state. It means professionalism. It also, it also helps us with GERMIA, because what it does is there's 12 critical tasks that we have to have training on every year. And if we complete those 12 critical tasks and do those things, then we can get a, I think it's about 12 to 14% discount on our liability insurance. So that helps out there. It also helps us out with grants. Now they're starting to tie grants to that. It's just many, many things that it makes us available for. Oh, no, and another thing, it helped us with our, and we went through it, is certification before. We got our state certification, but state certification helped to keep us up, because we're use-of-force certified. And when I say use-of-force certified, that means our policies and procedures when it comes to use of force that we've heard so much about in the news and all, you know, are intact. I mean, they're approved by the federal government, you know, Department of Justice and all. So with that, I'll let Mr. Grover tell you a little bit more, but I want to introduce Mr. Charles Grover. We call him Chuck Grover. And Mr. Grover is not a stranger to Tifton, because many, many years ago, when we were first got our state certification, he was one of the first assessors that we had that came down and assessed us. And he's worked through the years with agencies and departments to get both nationally accredited and state certification. And I think I met Mr. Grover back in the early, around 2000, 1999, 2000, you know, when I was going up to the certification meetings and all. And he was there then, helping everybody. And with, he's worked through the times, and now he's a state coordinator for state certification. And he's an icon when it comes to state certification and accreditation, because he knows it and he believes in it. And from what I've seen and from what I've learned of him, and not just because we're standing here getting ours today, you know, he is one of the icons when it comes to, and then when you want the dictionary and want to know how it should be done or how we meet this standard, he's one of the ones that everybody goes to. And so when the Chiefs Association put him in this position, they've done us and other agencies in the state a good deed.
I don't know how to follow that. I've done a lot of these around the state. I've never had an introduction like that. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it. It's my honor to be here tonight to, as he said, and as the city manager said, to present the Tifton Police Department with their state certification. As all of you know, for the last several years, law enforcement's been getting beaten up around, you know, in the media and around the country. I'll be the first one to tell you that a lot of that, some of that's our own fault. Sometimes we're our own worst enemy. But the majority of what you've been seeing in the media and around the country is not indicative of what law enforcement really is. That's the, that's a miniscule part of, of the bad side of law enforcement. Majority of law enforcement is exemplary. They're professional. They want to do the right things for the right reasons. And as the city leaders, that's what you want of your police department. There's no doubt about it. The fact that Tifton is doing this, we have 141 standards in our program. And so they had to meet all the standards that are applicable to them. Now, there are a few standards that they were able to get a waiver for, but the majority of them, they had to do. This is a three-year process. This is not something they can throw together overnight. And even, even now that they're getting state certified, they've got to do this again in three years. So this is going to be an ongoing process for them from now on. I'm sure you saw back in May, when President Biden issued an executive order on policing accountability. You may have seen that on the news. The majority of that very lengthy executive order deals with federal law enforcement, not local or state. However, you get down near the bottom of it, and it does switch over to local. And one of the things that directive says is the Attorney General has been given the directive to establish, make sure states have a state certification or accreditation program. We've had one here in Georgia for 25 years. I was telling Lee's wife a little earlier, we have 138 agencies right now that are state certified. We have another 53 that are in the process of getting certified. And then there's probably another 15 or 20 that are working on it that really haven't signed an agreement with us yet. So that's over 200 agencies in the state, once they all get state certified. The other thing that that executive order said is when discretionary grants come down from the Department of Justice, which Tifton is eligible to apply for, once this, once this goes into effect, they won't be able to apply for them unless they're state certified or they're already in the process of being state certified. So there's a lot of grants out there that can help them, help them with equipment. It also minimizes the amount of money the city has to put out. That kind of stuff will not be available to them unless they're state certified, and they will be. So as the Chief said, under GERMIA, under Georgia Municipal Association, because the department is now state certified, it's a 20% discount on your liability insurance premiums. So depending on what you pay for liability insurance, that could be a significant amount of money. And as long as they're state certified, you're going to continue to get that, that reduction every year. So one thing about this program, this is not, this is not the Chief's program. It is not Lieutenant Dunston's program. This is a department-wide effort. Everybody in the department needs to buy into this. It's a great thing for you as, as the leaders of the community, because if you know, if you know more about this, you know, when you go out and talk to the citizens, you can tell them, hey, our department is now state certified, and it's, there's a small group of state certified agencies in the state of Georgia. There's over 700 agencies in Georgia, and I just gave you the numbers of the ones that are either certified or working on it. So that's less than half of all the agencies in the state of Georgia. And if somebody says, excuse me, if somebody says, why, why did they do this? The analogy I like to use is two questions. One, would you take your family to a hospital that wasn't, that didn't meet certain standards for healthcare? Well, the answer should be no. Would you send your kids or your grandkids to a college or university that did meet certain standards for higher education? Again, the answer would be no. I wouldn't do that. You take that same analogy, though, and apply it to law enforcement. For the first two, they have to meet those standards. They have to be accredited or meet certain standards for their, whatever they're doing. On the law enforcement side, this is totally voluntary. This is not something they have to do, at least not yet. It's something they choose to do. I firmly believe that the day is coming when the federal government is going to dictate to all 50 states that they have to have a program. This discretionary grants and this, this executive order that came out in May is still voluntary, but it's coming. And being in Georgia, we're way ahead of the game. We've got a program that's been around for 25 years, and now the Tifton Police Department is one of those agencies in the state that is state certified. So this is a very big, this is really a big deal. I hope all of you realize that. It's a big deal for the department. It's a big deal for the City of Tifton. It really is. So without taking up any more of your time. Chief, this is your plaque for the department for the next three years. It's signed by the governor, signed by the president of the Georgia Association of Chiefs Police, the president of the Georgia Sheriff's Association, my boss, Butch Ayers, who's the executive director for Georgia Chiefs, and then the chair of the Joint Review Committee, which is the committee that actually approves them to be state certified. And Chief, congratulations. As I mentioned, this is a department-wide effort, from the chief down to the newest rookie officer or newest employee. But there has to be one person in the department that kind of pulls it all together. The one person that makes sure all the files are done, all the proofs are there, so when the assessors come in, they can see that not only does your policy say A, B, and C, but you prove that you're doing exactly what you say you're doing. And that person is the certification manager. And being, having been a certification manager, having been an accreditation manager, I know what he went through. He said his hair's turned gray, mine turned loose. But anyway, this, this is the person that has to keep all this stuff together. So Lee, if you'll come up. This is for Lieutenant Lee Dunston, as an expression of gratitude for your dedication and efforts to the Georgia Law Enforcement Certification Program as certification manager.
Congratulations.
And finally, we have, I had these challenge coins made up. Law enforcement used to swap patches around, and now we, we do challenge coins, kind of like the military does. But we give each agency, when they get state certified, we give them two challenge coins, one to the chief and one to the certification manager. And I've had, I've had chiefs ask me before, can I buy some extra ones? Can I get some from my council? Can I get some from my command staff? No, sir, you get two. That's all you get. So Chief, there's yours. Lee, there's yours. And I made sure that, that y'all got a little coin that I had made up. On the backside of that coin, it tells you what the six basic cornerstones are about certification. So if you read those and you think about them, that's what your, you want your police department to be, those, those six areas. And this is something that, because they are now state certified, they're going to make sure that that happens. So when you, when you people go out and in the community and talk to your constituents, you can brag on your police department, because they earned it. We don't give it away. They had to earn it.
They earned it.
They did. Yes, ma'am.
That's wonderful. And just to let everyone know, the, the, on the back of the coin, it references professionalism, operational guidance, positive community support, transparency, ethical conduct, and liability protection. Those are, those are some high standards. And I know that the men and women who work for the City of Tifton Police Department will meet those and exceed that every single day. We're so proud of all of you. Thank you so much for going through this. I know it's, it's a challenge, especially in these times, and we are a better community because of all of you and, and the work that you do. So I want you to hear from this council how very thankful we are for each and every one of you, for the families who support you, who worry about you, who are glad to see you come home at the end of the shift. We are all very, very thankful for you and appreciate this effort that you're providing, not just for the organization, but for every person in this community, whether they're a visitor, whether they're a business owner, whether they're a resident. You take care of them, and we appreciate that.
I wanted to present, Mr. Grover, some of our challenge coins. Take that with you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
And I just wanted to thank some people real quick.
Please, yes, take your time.
I would like to recognize and thank Lieutenant Lee Dunston for leading the way through the process of achieving this milestone. His hard work is appreciated. We appreciate everyone for pitching in and helping him collect the proofs and the needed documents to show compliance with each standard. I want to thank you, Mayor, Council, our city managers, staff members, for your support and guidance that led us to this day and the achievements of this milestone, which at times seemed miles away, but today we've caught up with it. Mayor, Council, and staff, I want to mention that under the strain of the pandemic, staffing shortages, unrest, crime sprees, daily challenges facing each officer, our department, and our community, your officers kept it together and stayed focused on serving and protecting our citizens while building a department that meets and in some cases exceed the professional standards set by state accreditation. This achievement of the state certification does two things that haven't been mentioned, but I've witnessed day in and day out. It shows the commitment of each officer, giving their best to our citizens. And secondly, it shows the professional manner in which they serve and protect our community every day. Please join me in giving Lieutenant Dunston and these officers that, that are there where the rubber meets the road and our investigators and all, a big hand for everything they've done to our community. Yes.
Are you interested in doing the picture with the chief?
No, let's, this is their, this is their, their day. This needs to be about them. Thank you so much, Mr. Grover.
Thank you.
That is absolutely something for this community to be very, very proud of. And I know that the work that's gone into this has been challenging, but we are a better community as a result of their being certified. So congratulations to the Tifton Police Department, and I hope that our citizens will, as they see our officers out and around town, will, will congratulate them and thank them for the work that they do. All right, moving on to the next item, we have new business. Jeff and Pete, you want to talk about the L-MIG, 2022 L-MIG resurfacing projects and the bids that we've received?
Hold on to the side of your chairs.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, we bid out the 2022 L-MIG, and we had bid opening on August the 31st. The low bid was Griffin Concrete LLC. We reviewed the bids. Stacy Watkins reviewed the bids, and we would like to recommend the award of the 2022 L-MIG to Griffin and Concrete LLC in the amount of $922,480.69. That is a good bit more than what was estimated two years ago when we started, but as everybody knows, prices have went up dramatically over the last two years.
All right.
So we, we are over budget. I think we all knew that. The good news is splosts is healthy, and this is going to be able to be funded accordingly, so there's no, no financial implications.
Okay. All right. Anyone have any questions?
Have we used this group in the past?
They are actually the ones that completed Main Lane for us over there. They've done the stormwater and everything, but they, they've done a great job. They were great to work with.
Okay.
And just like always, after the resurfacing, the strippers will come in. Jeff and I, just like in normal every year, there are roads that are, we understand that are in need of striping, so we're going to probably add some roads, just like we did in the past. So everything that, that happens with it, the water lines, the, on the streets that needed the water lines are being installed as we speak.
Good, okay.
So that is done. So the resurfacing, once you vote on this, the contract will be let, and hopefully we can see some paving latter part of October.
I'm scared to say. We, we'll award the bid, given those proceed, and then they'll work with us and give us an exact, or a time when they think they can get started, and we will let y'all know after that.
But it's safe to say by the end of the year, we'll have even going, okay?
They're going to want to do it as soon as possible.
Sure, okay. Perfect. All right, any other comments, questions?
Do two weeks matter, like waiting, you know? We don't meet again for two weeks.
No, it, because I need another two weeks for them to finish up the water mains. We kind of timed this to get it all together at one time, where the roads didn't sit there so long under repair.
We see where you're headed with that.
And that's going to be in December, not, you know, run into February, March.
Well, that's why I was wondering, you know, by the end of the year.
I feel like we will be done before the end of the year.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? Y'all good? Okay. All right, Jeff, just stay there, because now we need to talk about the 2023 L-MIG, and that's Local Maintenance Improvement Grant, the 2023 resurfacing projects, which the list is in our packet. So you want to talk about that?
Yes, ma'am. I went back through. We've done some riding and looked at the streets. Actually, I adjusted the bid, the estimate amounts based off of the current bid, so that hopefully we'd be closer. We did add three streets down at the end that, they're not really associated with any district. We just feel like these are some streets that really need to be done, that we're going to start doing these type of streets every now and then. We all know we got wide streets, and it takes a lot of money to pave them, but we've all talked about it, and we feel like these would be the best three to get started on those wide streets. But as you can see, the estimated budget went up 1.1 million on that.
It's, it's very aggressive. We've committed, we've patched all that we could patch on Central. We've patched all we can on Tifton Avenue, so this is the time to move these individual streets forward, if you so desire. I think it'd be a good addition to next year's paving, and I'm pretty certain that we'll be able to afford that with T-splosts and some splosts money, so it will not put a strain on financial accounts either. So this, this will be the appropriate time to do it.
On, on Tifton, I guess the state is saying, well, you've got to pay that even though it's.
No, Tifton's not a state road until you get to 12th Street.
Until you get to 12th.
Yeah, that's where the state, and they're fixing to pave theirs. They've already let that.
I tried. I tried to tuck it in. As you know, the, they're doing the project. You're exactly correct. They're going to do Tifton Avenue all the way out towards Osilla, if I'm, if I remember correctly. And I said, well, look, just come back up to Second Street and do the rest of Tifton Avenue, and be good partners. And I tried, and I didn't get anywhere.
But they control that traffic line at 12th? Do they control the traffic line?
At 12th, yes. The 125 coming through town is 41 that goes Love, Main Street, Love Avenue, until you get to 12th, and then they split. And that's why we, we have Tifton as ours.
I just, I will add, there is one more street that obviously I'll, I'll just bring to your attention, Matt Kons, McCollum, and I, we did discuss it, but Tifton Eldorado Road in front of the school is a heavily traveled roadway, probably all the way into, past Pucky Park. So the road is in bad condition. There are no sidewalks. We've talked about that as a potential project. So we floated the idea around, and we really think it's, it is a good project. So these three streets, part of paving and resurfacing, we, we're going to, I'd like to recommend to you at this time, because it will include resurfacing, that we do a CDBG project for Tifton Eldorado, where we do the resurfacing, we do sidewalks, and we correct the drainage on that strip. So it'll be a heck of a year for, for project, for.
Yeah, that would be a good project. That would be a good project for CDBG funding.
So I wanted to introduce that to you, and as the time goes forward here for CDBG projects, I think would be a perfect opportunity to take.
And when, when is our application due on that? What's the timing on all that? Remind me, if you don't mind. Okay. Okay.
Well, we have, we need six months to.
To get it prepared, yeah.
Engineer it. So we're ready to go, kind of shovel-ready. But if we could do Tifton Avenue, Central Avenue, Commerce Way, and Tifton Eldorado in the same fiscal year, that'd be, that'd be way to go.
All right, so then do, do we need to add Tifton Eldorado and CDBG to anything coming up to approve, or you'll just present that at a later?
Not yet. I just wanted to let you know, that's the fourth paving or resurfacing project that I'd like to recommend to you. That'll be a little separate than the L-MIG, but I'll bring that forward when the time is right.
Okay. All right. Any questions, comments? Can make you happy. That's good. That's good. Make your constituents happy. All right, moving right along. Jeff, just stay where you are, because we're going to discuss facility and right-of-way encroachment. So there's permitting.
Yes, I, I know all of y'all have probably gotten calls about people being in people's front yards, putting in different lines and things like that. And I don't think, just, I haven't been here that long, but I would dare to say over the past 20 years, there hadn't been as much work being done in Tifton, in our right-of-ways. And I don't think anybody ever looked at a true permit for allowing people to be in our right-ofway. We spent a lot of money over the last few weeks repairing water lines and all that has been hit, whether they were located correctly or not. With this, we can charge them for the cost of us repairing it, whether it was located correct or not. I mean, they're in our right-ofway. City owns the right-ofway.
Right.
We're allowing them to use it. And this would move forward with giving us a way to permit it correctly. We're doing a permit now through community development that's not really geared towards right-ofway, and this would be a much better permit to use. I would like to get Rob on this and let him look at it closely and make sure everything's correct before we vote on it, but I think it's a good permit, and we should go with it.
Okay. All right. And that copy of that proposed permit is in our packet, so. Okay. All right. And that copy of that proposed permit is in our packet. So as y'all have an opportunity to just review that. And then any questions, Jeff, I guess would be sent to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Any questions concerning the permitting? Okay. Y'all good? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. All right. Next, I'm going to call on Jonathan Taylor. And speaking of rights-of-way, he's got some information to share with us concerning GMA and our program.
Yep. So this kind of ties a little bit into what Jeff was just going in about the, about the right-of-ways. He was talking more of the permits, but Pete kind of requested me to take a look at some of the franchise agreements and some of those things associated with the right-of-ways that we have throughout the city. And so I found a, a GMA program that will basically come in and help us manage all of the right-of-way agreements that we have, all the franchise agreements, all of our right-of-ways, and those types of things to make sure that we are compliant, that some of these groups that are coming in and doing all this work in the right-of-ways are taking care of their financial responsibilities to the city. So that's kind of what this program is, that we're trying to kind of get involved with.
Okay.
There is a, there is an annual cost of $9,500, but it's well worth it. We'll recoup that in no time. And we, we do have a utility provider on our right-of-ways now who are not paying fees. So some of this is going to be looked at very closely and making sure that.
Right.
All those that use the right-of-way are paying their franchise fees.
It's how much?
$9,500.
$9,500?
$9,500.
Do we get a discount?
No. Well, that's what, for everybody else, it's 85. No, I'm teasing. I'm kidding. I'm teasing that. But I will say this. At the, at the Georgia Municipal Board meetings, they always talk, you know, they go through the reports and the various programs that they work, or that, excuse me, that they provide for the municipalities that they serve. And this program, it returns a significant amount of money to the communities that are engaged in using this program. So it will absolutely pay for itself. They will help us through, if there is an issue with any, anybody that's within the right-of-way that's not doing what they're supposed to do with regard to compensation, or how they're maintaining it, any of those issues. So it's, it's a, it's a pretty strong program that I think is going to be very beneficial to the community. So, so I, I think it's a great thing. So any, any questions that you might have of Jonathan, or anything we can, any other information we can get for you? Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate that. All right. And the next item on our agenda is just a, a budget amendment. We've got a couple of things that, kind of housekeeping sort of thing. So Larry, you want to provide any information on that for us?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is just a few minor items that we needed to shore up before our audit that comes up next month, just from some unforeseen items.
Sure.
Nothing major. One of the major ones, though, is ARPA. That came in after the budget was adopted last year. So.
Sure.
We needed to have some kind of budget for what we spent. We, I think we spent $788,000 of that $3,000,001 that we did receive in. So that was, that was the main item that we needed to get a budget in on. So.
Okay. All right. And that information is, is in your packet. So any questions of?
Larry and I talked about it. We kind of went through it. It's, this is, this is a case where governmental accounting is, is different from private.
Right.
I'm not used to what they did. So I've, I've learned over seven years.
Yeah.
What you have to do for, to shore up the government.
We have to balance the budget, don't we?
It's a difference, Steve. But.
Sure.
He and I went through them and.
The end of the year. It's end of the year process, just balancing.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you, Larry. I think that's it. No other questions, brother gentleman? Okay. All right. Moving along, city manager report. You've got a couple of things you need to talk to us about. Pete?
Thanks, Mayor. I think Jeff, everyone got, you know, sharp with their camera and downloaded the natural gas. But the, this is the public awareness program. This is done each year. And realistically, we get graded from PSC, the elected official staff, fire department, everyone that touches the natural gas system or has, is supposed to have knowledge of it. It's very crucial that the public awareness program goes out and that you indicate that you're aware of it, and that you know what the general, so, you know, specifics, and who to call. And this is how we gauge where we're missing, whether it's educational information or marketing. But if we have a natural gas system in our city, there should be the right people across the city that know about it, who runs it, and some of the specifics. So we've included the, the, the program for you, and I think each of you downloaded that. Staff is going to do the same thing. And again, this is something that we have to do each and every year. So I appreciate if you take the time to finish that.
Okay.
The GMA district meeting, I will just comment that the district meeting for 2022 is going to be Thursday, October 20th. It's going to be at 6 o'clock, and it will be at the Leboy Rogers Center. So if you want to mark that down, Jessica and I will certainly put some more info as the time draws near. Also, I left at your seat the proposed comp plan stakeholders. This is where I could really use your help. Crystal has put that together. Again, these are suggested names. And if you have additional ones, we could probably use two or three more. I think there's two elected officials that should sit on this particular effort. Meetings will be at various times, and again, after hours, so business people could attend. But this is the start of our comprehensive plan and understanding it. And the stakeholders are the ones that kind of guide the tour in specific areas. And this is where we get the input and some feedback from those that are in the community for this, for a five-year look ahead. So please, if you'll look at that for me, if you have any suggestions, again, those are just names that we proposed. If you'll please get that back to me just as soon as we can, because we're, we're ready to probably push this off in a couple of weeks, if I remember correctly. So I will continue to get the dates as, as we draw closer.
Okay.
And then lastly, Crystal informed me that she did fill out the CHIP application.
Uh huh.
That's the Community Housing Improvement Program. This is, this will be big time for the URA. And the application is filled out, just acknowledging that we are going to be ready to apply. We have solicited the help of a grant writer, the Cordell area, and she is good at what she does. I'm excited to, to turn to her, but the CHIP application's first. We bid out who's going to write it, and, and then we submit it. So we're, we have big, big aspirations for the CHIP program and the URA this year. So.
That's wonderful.
The first step is taken.
That's great. Good deal. That's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for that.
That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We have mayor and council comments. Anybody like to go first?
Just wanted to congratulate the police department on their achievement with their accreditation with the state. It's a big deal. And just want to say congratulations to them and congratulations to the city of Tifton.
Absolutely. You're here.
Just, I echo what MJ said.
All right.
It's a good deal.
All right. Excellent. I'll go next. We'll just, we'll just go down the road here. I hope everyone had a, a good, safe Labor Day weekend. And I was on a call this morning with Georgia Municipal Association, and Larry Hanson, the CEO, wrapped up that call with some comments that really kind of moved me. I, I wanted to share some of those with you. This is not quoting Larry, but just kind of paraphrasing. But he made the comment that he, you know, he said, I know that you as, as elected officials across the state appreciate the work that's done in your community, and that the people who labor, the people who make and drive the economy in your community are so important, whether it's small mom-and-pop, two-person business, who may have a little store downtown, up to the largest industry. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to say, and he was right with his comments, just to say thank you to the people in this community who work here. Whether you live here or not, you work here and you drive our economy, and that's so very important. And we're so thankful for that. And also want to put my appreciation with, with the rest of the council in congratulating our City of Tifton Police Department. I know that was a commitment. It was a lot of hard work, and we are the beneficiary of that. So just want to say thank you to the people who work in this community, and thank you to our police department. Lester, turn it over to you.
For myself, I just want to just echo the police department, great job that they're done. Also, some of the, the riling, trash picked up along the roads. I got to witness that firsthand. Got to talk to some of the guys that were working the trucks. And also, I want to thank my department for the, the great cleanup of the alley. That's continued to be a, a great situation for my district, because like I said, the alleys are used for extracurricular activities.
Not the fun kind either, right? Not the good kind, I should say.
I even got the word that, like, you know, some of the street guys were very unhappy that the alley was cleaned up. So I just want to say, you know, we need to stay on top of the alleys, because it's a great deterrent, having a clean alley. That's, that's all I have.
All right.
Yeah. Again, congratulations to the city police department. That took a lot of hard work and dedication. Very proud of that. And, you know, congratulations to them. Picking back up where Lester was talking about riling, I've called on air a couple of times for some Bolt Pickup, and they've done a fantastic job. And I just want to remind everybody out there of when your Bolt Pickup Day is, in case they might not know. Monday and Tuesday's trash, their Bolt Pickup Day is Thursday, and Wednesday and Thursday's trash, their Bolt Pickup Day is Friday. So again, if anybody needs some Bolt Pickup, those are your days. And reach out to Rylan, and they'll take care of it.
Good information. And you can take your recycling. I took my recycling the other day, and it was very clean, and they were very helpful. And so it's, it's working. All right, gentlemen, anything else we need to discuss? Anything else to come forward, the council? All right. Then we are adjourned. Thank you all.